I'm calling the public comments session into order. And I would like to thank you for taking the time and out of your schedule to actually voice a comment regarding immigration policies that we are facing. My name is Winfor Craig. I'm Chair of the Commission of the City of Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. At this time, we will be moving into public comments until 1:00 p.m. Any person who wish to make public comments can do so at this time. We will start with the list of speakers who have signed up online through the city council portal or Google form. Following the list, any other person who have signed up here today may make comments. Please note that the sign up sheet in the public comments is located next to the podium. When your name is called, you will have three minutes at the podium to provide your comment. When the light turn green, you shall begin. Please begin to provide your name once you commence your comment. When the lights turn yellow, you will have one minute left, and when the light turn red, your time is up. Commissioner Gerhart will call you by name, and please respond by moving up to the podium.
One other note, unlike city council comment, you do not have to state your address. There, yes, unlike at city council comment periods, you do not have to state your address. Some people, those who are undocumented, have some concerns, and so we want to be very respectful of their needs. So just your name is fine. The first person signed up is Ray Dunn. The second person signed up is Laura Wiens. So some of these people will be coming later. Christina Castillo or Costillo. Judy Sa. Sorry if I mispronounce that, Judy.
One of the few who actually pronounced it correctly. Should I begin?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Judy Su, and I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. Here are some statistics from the Urban Institute and the Center for Race and Social Concerns at Pitt that defy the myth of Asians as a model minority within the city of Pittsburgh. Twenty-three percent of all Asian households live in poverty in the city. Asians as a race have the lowest homeownership rates here. Asian women have higher unemployment rates than white women, and Asian men are twice as likely as white men to be unemployed. The median income of white households in Pittsburgh exceeds that of Asians by more than $10,000. This means that some of us are at the very bottom of the economic scale here, while some of us are at the top. However, because of the persistence of the model minority myth, in Pittsburgh, poor Asian Americans are often kept out of the frame in policymaking discussions and often fall through available safety nets. No matter where we are economically, all of us, however, are vulnerable to expressions of white supremacy, which lies at the foundation of the profound inequality between the races in the city and hinders its overall growth. Where does it happen in Pittsburgh? I personally avoid Carson Street on weekend nights since that's where I've repeatedly encountered the most blatant racist aggression from groups of intoxicated young white men and occasionally white women. But I've also been told to go back where I come from and verbally assaulted by stone-cold, sober individuals of all ages and a range of races all over the city. White supremacy flourishes when people of different races don't grow up together. The kind of familiarity that is to my mind the only real vaccine against the power of white supremacy in this country has to be of the lifelong variety. We have to be school friends and neighbors in order for white supremacy to lose its default status as a way of thinking in this country. We need racially and economically integrated schools and neighborhoods and much more affordable housing to halt migration of minorities away from the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. The next person on the list is Monica Ruiz.
Good morning. My name is Monica Ruiz. I'm here to talk about the communities that I work with. I work primarily with the undocumented community here in Pittsburgh, and I'm here to tell you that the fear that they live in is very real. ICE is conducting raids and is picking up people at a much higher rate here in the state of Pennsylvania than in any other state. That doesn't mean that we have more undocumented people here in the state of Pennsylvania. That means that they're picking up more people at a higher rate here. These people live in fear. Some are afraid to leave their homes to go to work, to take their children to school, or even to go to church to worship. That's not the type of city that I'd like to live in. The narrative right now is hate. We are the targets of this hate. People of color, minorities, people who weren't born here, people of a different religious background, and that is, again, not the type of city I'd like to live in. Real lives are being affected. I see on a daily basis the effects of what ICE deportations do to families and especially young children. Our youth are being harassed on the way to school, being stopped by ICE. Some are being detained. If you think that ICE raids aren't happening and that increased enforcement isn't happening, you're wrong. Just because it's not in the newspaper, just because it's not being covered, doesn't mean it's not happening. Talk to me. I can tell you, they are happening. When I have to have a conversation with people and tell them, "You must leave your home today because ICE will be back tomorrow," and watch them pick up a handful of things because they need to leave and go hide, again, that's not the type of city that I want to live in. Racism is real. Judy touched a little bit about it. It's not going to change unless it's addressed and unless we're intentional about the things that we're doing. And that isn't throwing people together from different cultures to force them to learn about each other. It's educating people. It's changing the narrative. People tend to listen to the people that talk the loudest, and unfortunately for us, we have a president that screams very loud, very negative things that are affecting people and our communities every single day. Pittsburgh has the opportunity to take this, and we can be the leaders. We can show other cities, we can show other people in this country on the way to be welcoming and how to treat people with dignity and respect, because people in these communities, that's all they want. We have to talk about the overpolicing of our communities. I was just at the Port Authority meeting, which is many of the people that you named are still there, that's why they're not here, on how the overpolicing of black and brown communities leads to deportation, to criminalization of something as even as though as a $2.75 fare on the bus. We have to make sure that we're helping people so if they are victims of crimes, they're not in danger of being deported. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next person on the list is Bayina Brookins.
Hi, my name is Bayina Brookins. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. I'm here to speak on behalf of the people in the Muslim community that have been impacted by the government policies. Policies that include the Muslim ban, FBI surveillance, and infiltration of Muslim communities. These policies create an atmosphere of xenophobia, fear, and hatred. As an African-American Muslim woman, I increasingly face Islamophobia, racism, and misogyny. The current rhetoric towards Muslims deeply impact the most vulnerable and visible representations of Muslims in the U.S., that is Muslim women. Muslim women wear headscarves or hijab to show modesty. Cowardly bigots attack innocent Muslim women. These bigots are fueled by xenophobia and hatred coming from right-wing news organizations. Many of the Islamic-phobic policies coming from this current administration also create implicit and explicit bias. Muslims are stopped by TSA and endure random additional screenings. Muslims are at the back end of hateful comments and discrimination at work, school, and in their communities. This hate speech and Islamic-phobic policies are a direct affront to the perceived liberties and values of this nation. Many Muslims feel isolated and fear the backlash coming from bigots because they receive misinformation from this administration and news organizations. This current xenophobic and Islamic-phobic climate hurt the most vulnerable in our communities. We should have, we shouldn't have to fear for our lives as we go through our day-to-day activities. We must understand that Islamic-phobic policies and anti-Muslim bigotry are intrinsically linked. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bayina. The next person on the list is Will Hallam.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Will Hallam. I have been living in Pittsburgh since fall 2010 and in the United States since summer 1990, and I'm speaking here in this forum serving two roles. First, as an immigrant from Indonesia who is also a member of Indonesian community of Pittsburgh. As you may already know, Indonesia is the seventh largest county in the world, has an estimated population of 260 million people, eighty-seven percent of them are Muslim. So it is the most populous Muslim-majority country in the world. Fortunately, Indonesians are not included in any travel ban issued by the current administration. Last Sunday, Indonesians community of Pittsburgh celebrated the Eid holiday, which is the holiest day of Muslims. So I used that event to seek feedback from the community elders and leaders of this very topic we are speaking of right now. And here's their feedback, and I paraphrase. "For the many years we have lived in Pittsburgh, we never experienced any blatant discrimination. In fact, we had it worse back in Indonesia. Moreover, since Trump's election, neighbors and coworkers have been extra nice to us." Second, as a founding director of Storyberg, Storyberg is a nonprofit startup that has been in operations for six months outside the startup incubator. We are a community storytelling platform that seeks to foster discussion and engage the community with underreported and undertold stories. So, stories and experiences from the Indonesian leaders that I just told you earlier are certainly underreported. But were they really never discriminated against? That's my question. Many told me that. I doubt it. Nowadays, a form of discrimination can be as subtle as not having people of color or other religions in leading roles in Hollywood movies or in whatever authoritative panels in our daily life. Storyberg believe that one way to alleviate discrimination and other social justice are by flooding the information space with positive and educative stories, to balance the stories in traditional media that only appear when something goes wrong. Doing so will tell the wider community that we, immigrants and refugees, exist. We live and walk among you, doing the same daily activities, experiencing both struggles and successes like everyone else. And it doesn't require a journalist to tell such stories. Everyone can do that in their own way, through written and visual narratives. So don't wait until journalists talk to you or ask for your stories. Go to them. Tell your stories. You know, Storyberg is a platform that is open, so feel free to talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yinka Aguga Williams.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Upendra Dhahal. I'm from Buddhist community. We have over 5,000 population in the greater Pittsburgh region within the Allegheny County. I used to live in the city of Pittsburgh, though I'm a little bit out of the boundary of the city of Pittsburgh, but our population, sizable number of the population live within the city of Pittsburgh. As far as we have with the new administration, since November, our community has some kind of fears, and those fears are real in a way that when we hear, even though most of my community members have come here legally as refugees to this country, the fears of intimidation, fears of backlash, fears of hate crimes, whether on the street or anywhere, they're still very alive and makes us anxious all day. We have a couple of incidents within the city of Pittsburgh, like public safety issues along the Carrick-Brownsville Road corridor. Those public safety issues have been the main primary concern of the Buddhist community as of now, but in this environment, this new environment, we, when we hear of incidents and hate crimes against our other neighbors, particularly the Muslims and the Latinos, we do not think that we are also, we are safe, we are a safe community. Though legally, we might be able to produce documents, but that doesn't mean that we are protected on the streets while walking or in the street or in the school. So we have, we have those kind of general fears, and that is promoted or encouraged by the current administration. As far as the refugee travel ban is concerned, we are also concerned about the refugee ban by the executive order, though there were a couple of attempts and also the code invalidating them, but we think that the refugee ban is something illegal and is below the values and the standard of what America has been standing for since its foundation. I would definitely recommend Pittsburgh Human Relations Commission to take lead on intercommunity relations and advocacy of the minorities irrespective of their religious or legal background. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alexis Vargas.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. I am hearing a theme in the persons who have spoken thus far, and I think it really presents us with a very important challenge. We live in a nation right now that is divided more deeply than we can express. We have a rhetoric that is both at the same time filling us with fear and then identifying a target to aim your fear at. And here we are, invited to speak about this and given an opportunity to be a part of the change, to be a part of the transformation, which would be learning how to talk to each other. And wouldn't that be something if Pittsburgh could teach the nation how to talk to each other? And we, Monica spoke to it, we live in serving undocumented Latinos with people, children who are living every day with a fear of losing mom and dad, with a sense of terror of what's going to happen next. Do we really want to be a part of a country where children are living in terror because mom and dad might be taken from them at any moment? We're better than that. And I hear this rhetoric now about sanctuary cities. Pittsburgh has not identified itself as a sanctuary city, but it's on the list anyway because it has, this very city council has written policies that have, stand for immigrants and help to protect immigrants, and I am so happy about that. But I want to say, when can we begin to speak rationally? We are told to fear sanctuary cities because they will allow criminals out into the public to endanger the lives of our citizens. If the police and the jails find no reason to keep that person, why in the world do we present them to be a criminal? The police and the jails find no reason to keep them. They would keep them if there was a warrant for their arrest. They would keep them if they were a criminal. To make our people who are undocumented, the very image of criminal activity in this country is just simply not true. I guess that means my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sister. Julian Rick. Carla Lamb.
Hello. My name is Megan Lovett, and I'm an attorney at Community Justice Project. Excuse me. Community Justice Project is a nonprofit law firm dedicated to representing low-income people in Pennsylvania. Primarily, we take on class actions and impact litigation to cases to ensure that our vulnerable clients receive full protection of the law and are treated fairly. One group we see increasingly in need of our services is the documented and undocumented immigrant community. Immigrants are often unfamiliar with their rights under the law, which makes them particularly vulnerable to discrimination, wage theft, other types of abuses. They're also being shut out of public services by lack of language access. Community Justice Project attempts to correct that. We have advocated for immigrant workers who are significantly underpaid and denied overtime pay while working long and strenuous hours. These workers are often never informed of the minimum wage and overtime laws and are sometimes threatened with retaliation if they report the unlawful wage practices. So they're working six to seven days a week, sometimes ten to twelve, even thirteen hours a day with minimal breaks, and getting paid a flat rate, which doesn't account for the hours or obviously the overtime. Through our own outreach and our relationships with immigrant advocacy groups that are here today, we are occasionally able to identify these workers and get them their back pay. We've even gotten their back pay if they've been deported, but we are having trouble having those workers be brave enough to reach out to us in these times of fear. We are also fighting for language access in the courts, schools, and other public services. Providing an interpreter and translated vital documents are Title VI obligations for any organization that receives federal funding, as I'm sure you know. The Unified Judicial Plan requires affirmative procedures to identify limited English proficient people as early in the process as possible. That is, the person doesn't have to tell you, you need to be having a procedure to identify that person when they enter the system. And that is necessary to maintain the access to swift and efficient justice. Without prompt language services, immigrants are effectively barred from fair treatment and full access to public services that they have a legal right to access. Parents can't monitor their children's discipline and school records. Women can't report domestic abuse. Inmates don't get proper medical attention in jail. I specifically asked the commission to monitor the justice system for compliance with the state language access plan. And finally, as we've heard, ICE activity has created a strong fear of deportation, and it has created a significant chilling effect among clients who would speak out about illegal actors, illegal employers, and lack of language access. They don't want to stick their neck out. We asked that the city ensure that all public services, which immigrants have a legal right to access, are safe for our neighbors and makes the city safer. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Sila Warhufdig. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh, and I'm also an immigrant, but I am a white, I speak with an English accent, and I am very privileged. And it is up to us, and I am so grateful for the commission, for the work that they are doing. We need, the white, privileged population in this city needs to stand up and support our immigrant population. We have, this is our obligation to give them as much support as we can. I've been very fortunate to work with the Iraqi population, and I have listened to some of the stories of the, of the people coming, particularly the women, coming from Iraq and their experience, and Israel talked about that earlier. They've come from war, they've come from displacement, they've come from all sorts of, and all, most of our refugees have experienced this. And yet, they have made an incredible home for themselves. I had privilege of having two wonderful young Iraqi youth in my youth group, one of whom, and they were incredible asset, and they had just learned the language, they had just come in, they had, and they were picking up the culture. One of them, just an interesting story, she was an artist, and in her junior year in high school, she linked up with an Iraqi veteran artist from, who went to Iraq to fight our wars, the war there, and the two of them put together an installation which was held in one of the major galleries downtown. This young woman and her sister are now at Carlo College, about to graduate. Incredible that they had, what they are adding to the community. And it is our job to make sure, this city, to make sure that these young folks can be, and they are, an incredibly productive part of our community, we need to make sure they are safe in this, in this society. Thank you.
Shashank Srivasa Tava. Bob Marak. Fatima Juma.
Good morning. I live in the city of Pittsburgh, and I am educator that has taken students around the world for 45 years. Every time I do it, it is my hope and the schools' hope that these students will come home with an understanding of the world that we live in. I also work with an organization that does virtual exchanges with people in the Middle East. Recently, I was in Lebanon, watching high school students in Lebanon speaking to high school students in Paducah, Kentucky. Where else could we have a better relationship than we could within our educational system? We can't sit back and think that we are not going to win this battle over immigration, travel bans, heard on the way here this morning, that grandparents are not even part of the new travel ban that our administration has put out. What kind of a country do we run right now that we can't sit back, think clearly about the young people in this country who need to understand that the world is much smaller today than it was 50 years ago? And they need to know that Asians, Indians, and people of the Middle East are people who are living their lives very well and very similar to what they do. They go to school, they worry about what they're going to do during after-school, they worry about what they're going to eat, and that's what we as a country should be sharing with these students in our educational system. And I would be happy to help this commission if they want me to get any contacts that I could give to help in a situation to bring Pittsburgh schools into a better situation in the future. Thank you very much.
John Robeson.
Can I be heard?
Yes.
I'm Jonathan Robeson, 52 Goretta Street in Pittsburgh. I would like to say something of the immigrants, the immigrants are getting hostility, ranging from drunks on Carson Street to police officers, to cheating employers, to the President of the United States. There's discussion of the character of people from the immigrant communities. I would like to share something on the subject, which I consider a poem, although it was not written as a poem. And I'm not talking about the marvelous Emma Lazarus poem that someone else may quote to you. This was something said by Eugene Victor Debs when he was speaking to the court judge which was about to sentence him for his work representing strikers. Gene Debs said apropos of the character of the people he represents, he works for, "While there is a lower class, I am in it. While there is a criminal element, I am of it. While there's a soul in prison, I am not free." These are the least of us. We should support them. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hello. My name is Abdul Kadir Charambo. Hello. My name is Abdul Kadir Charambo. As I'm the leader of United Somali Bantoo of Greater Pittsburgh, as my focus is to make sure the Somali community's security, is calling and ability to thrive in Pittsburgh. As everybody talking about the travel ban, we have had a lot of story about it to our neighbors, which is they open their heart for us. And we really created an organization for the Somali community that's called United Somali Bantoo of Greater Pittsburgh, with a volunteer of 28 from north side neighborhood, some of them anywhere in the city, like Bellevano, Bellevue, Monlebanon, and all 28 came from the city anywhere. So as we sit and talk, now the community is doing good, and we want everybody from the city to open their heart like that. We have created 19 programs. Eleven of them right now is carried. We didn't receive any fund from the county, the city, either the federal, the state, and it's working for us with the volunteers and the leader of the Somali community. It's all running. One of the programs is a youth program that we set up as a religious school for the community. It's running in Northview Heights, mostly in the weekend, and when the school is closed, we do weekdays. And we also trying to do after-school, after-school, but we don't have that time to be, you know, everybody to attend because everyone is going to work. Being a refugee in Pittsburgh, being a refugee in Pittsburgh, we challenge a lot, but since we have these 28 volunteers helping us through the community, we felt happy, and we want the whole city to help like that, the refugees that are here in the city, to feel more welcome, not only for the Somali, all, everybody. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. All right, we have Halima Hassan today, and she wants a translator. She's sitting over there, but since we have all speaker for three minutes, I thought it was going to take a little bit of time. So my name is Luzia Smani. I work for the Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh. I work at Northview Heights, I'm working with immigrant families and all population. Today, I came here, one of my big concerns for the immigration family, I wanted to introduce a tool that can help all immigration family. My family arrived here in 2004, and then we really faced a lot of challenges. In order to guide all the immigration family, I would love to introduce this to everyone today, and I hopefully you guys take all the advices and hopefully you guys help us with it. We want to do, like, to start a seminar, which is called 90 Days in America for Immigration Family. And that's like a training whenever new families arrive to America, that we can help them out and guide them away to success, to be in the United States, heads of Somali Bantoo, and also for all the immigrations. And the other thing is the homeownership. Since I started working for the Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh, I have seen a lot of immigration families and other families who has like, you know, two jobs, a family has three jobs, and then they don't know the, they don't have the knowledge, like, you know, to be in, like, you know, to budgeting and, you know, other things, like, you know, how to be a homeowner ship. And we wanted to introduce this seminar to them and, you know, bring the word outside there, and so we can, like, you know, teach them, and so they can learn from, like, you know, the knowledge that we have. Because, like, since I started working there, one of my passion was like, okay, since I'm seeing people around here and then they need help, and what can I do? And then, so, and I was like, and then I was connected with a Somali Bantoo Greater Pittsburgh, and then they, I volunteer for them as a booking, and then, and then I really enjoy them. And then I told them that I think the best thing for us to do right now is to help out the new immigration family coming today, because we suffered and we don't want them to suffer too. And then the seminar called 90 Days in America for Immigration Family, and then hopefully we find any office or, you know, you guys can help us out. And that was my idea. And I really appreciate you guys for listening, and thank you very much, and have a blessing base, everyone.
Thank you very much. So that's the end of the list of people who signed up online. Now, anyone in the audience is very welcome to come and comment as well.
Hello. Stormy Mira Montez. I would like to address the topic of Pittsburgh being called a sanctuary city. The idea is to help immigrants and all vulnerable communities feel welcome and safe in Pittsburgh. The Book of Joshua calls sanctuary cities "a city of refuge for the slayer." How can we honestly call this a sanctuary city if the residents don't even feel safe? Just a while ago, Wilkinsburg Port Authority Police reenacted Django on a young man because he defended himself against their police canine. Pittsburgh schoolteachers are raping students and receiving a slap on the wrist or a high five. Pittsburgh paramedics killed Sergeant First Class Victor Mira Montez and probably other citizens that we don't even know about. Mayor Perdido won't do anything about Victor's murder because it's not newsworthy. At Westinghouse High School, a gang of retarded girls jumped another girl because she didn't want to play their game and be a crackhead or a welfare mom. The school superintendent and the Pittsburgh police called it mutual combat because she had the nerve to defend herself. Some employees at Shop &amp; Save in the Hill District are being treated like slaves and not being given a living wage, while other residents are just finding out that someone just took out a second mortgage on their home. There are homeless people in downtown Pittsburgh right now begging for help, and city leaders are turning a blind eye because it's not close enough to the election yet. Now, I did see Jake Wheatley on television posing for pictures for the unfortunate ones, but I did not see him handing out any food to the people that voted him into office. There are lazy caseworkers issuing checks for invisible children, and they need to be fired. They say President Trump is going to stop government funding for any city that lists itself as a sanctuary if we can't keep track of the immigrants that come in. My concern is for the criminals that are going to get mixed up in the bunch and make it bad for everyone else. It's common knowledge that if a city is not racially balanced, it does not qualify for government grants. Now, Mayor Perdido and Mr. Alvarado brought Hispanics into Pittsburgh to get the American dream. They've been stuck out in Beachview for a long time, they still haven't caught it. So the question is, if they got money for these people, where is it? In my opinion, sanctuary city is just a fancy word for money laundering, so city officials can pay their mortgages, car loads, and vacations on the down-low. If we can't protect the women in our city from Bill Cosby and his wife, how can we expect city officials to protect us from the small group of criminals that are going to make it bad for everybody else?
Good morning. Tim Stevens, Chair of BPEP, the Black Political Empowerment Project, and co-convenor with Valerie Dixon of the Coalition Against Violence, Greater Pittsburgh Coalition. I wasn't sure if I was going to be here today, so I didn't schedule myself, but I was able to be and wanted to come down and thank Helen and Executive Director and all of you for hosting this today. I am a cable news freak, and I watch cable news much too much, and it has affected my We have a president of this country who has set a tone that is not healthy. The last 24 hours, we heard the comments affecting a female nationally renowned host of television. We've heard from the president talk about what he could do with females and their body parts. We've heard a president say what he could do or what should happen when he was running for office in terms of encouraging violence, encouraging people to say, "I will pay your bills," stating what would have happened back in the day, when people would have been taken out on a stretcher. What he would do with immigrants coming into this country, some of that being implemented in the last 12 hours or so, 24 hours. We're in a sad moment, and that's why I wanted to come down and commend what you're doing today. We have to set a tone in this country and let it begin in our city. We are a nation of immigrants. We pride ourselves on that. We have a policy that is discouraging grandmothers and grandfathers from coming in, there's something wrong with that. We're becoming far too insensitive. As a guy who's helping to coordinate an anti-violence document, signals are being sent to our kids, signals are being sent to our boys to be insensitive to women, signals are being sent for us to be insensitive to each other. Language is important, the words we use with and between and among each other is important, and how we behave is important. So I encourage you to continue the work that you've begun and that you're encouraging us all to embrace today. Thank you for helping us be a more welcoming city.
Good morning. My name is Henry Gonzalez. I am a Pittsburgh resident. I'm also an immigrant. My family moved here from Venezuela when I was seven, back in 1965, and currently I'm a teacher at Fox Chapel High School in the World Languages Department. I guess first, I would also thank the Commission and the work that you're doing, the important work that you're doing, especially in these times. And I would support anything that can be done, not only by the Commission but by the city, to push back against the climate, the anti-immigrant climate that we're facing, not just here but throughout the whole country. And I just wanted to add some comments regarding my experience here in the city as a teacher. Mr. Stevens mentioned the issue of behavior, how we behave, and I think the Commission is showing and presenting a very good model of how we can behave towards, towards folks in our immigrant community here in the city. But I want to extend that down into the educational community. My experience as a teacher, I found that students, young students, whether it's in primary grades, middle school, high school, are quite open to instruction and education on how we should behave. Oftentimes, I'll find in my classes that students might come in with a particular perspective, that they've learned through their families, their own experience growing up, but once they rub up against the immigrant community in their schools and they understand the experience that folks have had, they can begin to experience a sense of compassion of what's going on. So my encouragement to the Commission and to anyone involved in our current effort is to try to extend the mission of this Commission partly into the outreach and education community, to extend that education effort to our young people here in the city. They need to learn at an early age of what it means to be compassionate to the immigrant community, how we should respond, how should we, how we should behave, and let it be part of their formation in becoming responsible adults in the community. A lot of folks here in this room are involved in organizations that are concerned with issues of social justice, et cetera, so won't speak to anything specific there. Most folks are involved in one way or another, my sense is. So again, my encouragement would be for the Commission to look for ways to involve the education community, whether, again, at the lower levels or at the higher levels, to communicate a message of compassion, of fairness, in a way that's practical. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. I apologize for being late. I'm Laura Weens. I was scheduled to speak earlier, but I was at the Port Authority Board meeting talking about the concerns around the proof-of-payment stuff on the T, so I'm going to talk a little bit about that. So Pittsburgh's Republic Transit, I'm the incoming director, is part of a coalition of community organizations alongside the Merton Centers, Casa San Jose, and the Alliance for Police Accountability, who are concerned about Port Authority's implementation of the fair proof-of-payment system on the T. And as it's proposed, the policy of using armed police officers checking fare on the light rail could have devastating impacts to people of color, our immigrant neighbors, the mentally ill, and the poor. We have seen several instances of the Port Authority police exercising excessive force in recent years, including the shooting death of Bruce Kelly Jr. and the violent treatment of Somali youth downtown with little oversight or remedy. This proposal would put more armed officers in a position where the black community and brown community could be targeted and it could become more commonplace, particularly because the policy doesn't have adequate measures in place to prevent racial profiling. When the Port Authority police runs names in the database to check for fare infractions, it also gives ICE the opportunity to issue a warrant to detain those individuals. So a fare violation of a mere $2.50 could therefore result in deportation. This happened- This happened very recently in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and what I heard today was that it was, this person was detained for, what's the words, the possibility that they might have evaded fare, so it wasn't even confirmed. And could have a chilling effect, it will have a chilling effect, on ridership among our most vulnerable immigrant neighbors. Public transit is not a checkpoint. Fare violations could additionally result in a fine of $300 and even jail time. Our coalition is vehemently opposed to the criminalization of the poor. If somebody lacks $2.50 to pay a fare, they certainly will not have $300 to pay a fine. The Port Authority has additionally already acknowledged the existing infrastructure and connect card machines often have problems taking payments, so it is feasible that even those who intend to pay will find themselves caught up in a criminal proceeding because those machines don't work. This is both a legal and a human rights issue. We are urging for the Port Authority to have fare checking on the T done by ticket agents, not armed police officers, civilian agents, and for fare violations to result in civil penalties and not criminal charges. We are additionally calling for non-compliance with ICE around detainment and measures to prevent racial profiling and checking fares. And we appreciate the Committee on Human Relations' attention and support for our communities in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward and comment?
Hello. My name is Noor Khan. I'm a physician. I'm a Muslim, and I've been living in and working in the city of Pittsburgh for the last 20 years. And I heard about this event fairly late. I'm very glad I made it over here. I just wanted to share some anecdotes from my kids. So we've been here since 1997. My oldest child was born in 2000, just before September 11th. After September 11th, a lot of things changed all around the world. One thing that changed for us as Muslims living in America was a sense of security. When we first came here, I was pleasantly surprised because I had no experience of Americans beyond what you see on Hollywood movies of how welcoming and how friendly this nation is. Even after 9/11, people have gone out of their way to make us feel welcome and befriended. And I really appreciate everyone who's reached out to us, including the people in this room. We have to talk about what our children are being taught, and many experienced educators over here mentioned that. But one story I would like to share is how social media affects all of us and especially our kids. So back in 2008, at the time of the national election, my six-year-old son came back from school and said, "I know for a fact that Obama is not an American." I said, "How do you know that?" He said, "Well, Christopher told me." So this is what was happening, you know, in the households around the country, and this is what our children were listening. My daughter said, "Why do you want to vote for so-and-so? From the news, it seems like they're really bad people." So I had to sit down and talk to my seven-year-old about the difference between real news and fake news, even back then. Just last year, in June 2016, I was going through my seven-year-old's room, and I found a note she'd written to her friends saying, "Dear A&amp;S, do you know that if Trump gets elected, we will be kicked out of the country? We have to do something about this." I smiled, I took a photograph, and, you know, I shared it with the other parents, and back then we were still hopeful, but, you know, things happened the way they did. So it is very important that we continue to do forums such as this. It's very important that we continue to reach out to each other. I'm running out of time. One thing that we really need to do as immigrants coming to the U.S., as first-generation immigrants, is to build better ties with our community, and we're trying to do that now. And if nothing else has happened, what has happened is that all the events that are happening around the world have actually brought us closer together. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good day. I'm a visitor to Pittsburgh. I've only been here for three days, but just to give my impression, in three days, I felt this city is a very generous, hospitable city. I'm staying with a family with a puppy. We're just walking down the street, and people from all nationalities come and talk about the puppy. I was in a prayer meeting yesterday, people from all nationalities coming together to pray for the good of the neighborhood and the community. Yesterday, we just visited a few people from the Somali Bantu community. It was a hot day. My wife just went in the shade. People noticed, said, "Oh, come, come to our house," gave her water, hospitality. So just these are little signs of hope. I think American people are very generous people. I think there is a willingness for good and for community. The media is saying, reporting important things, but there is so much good and a lot of hope, and I think that's been expressed here this morning. So I just want to thank everyone here for what you're doing to build your city. I think you have a great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes. We have somebody that was signed up. Alicia, do you want to comment? Alicia Cabral.
Hi, my name's Alicia Cabral. I work for Immigrant Services and Connections and also helped found a program called Prize Academy, Pittsburgh Refugee and Youth Summer Enrichment Program. I was planning on going in the afternoon, so I have not really prepared myself, but first I would really like to thank everyone for addressing this topic. I think it's incredibly important and timely. So thank you, everyone, for taking the time to discuss this really important issue. I know that the people that I work with and the students that attend Prize Academy have all been affected by discrimination in small and large ways, whether it is very explicit bullying in school or small, maybe unnoticed, interactions. And I commend the city for doing a lot of work to try to address these issues. I know that the city doesn't have direct discretion over the school districts, but I would urge you all to work more closely with Pittsburgh Public Schools and the surrounding school districts to address these issues of bullying because it has greatly affected the students that we work with and also with employers. I know that, I'm not sure if anybody else has already commented on this, but our clients and families that we work with also face a lot of issues with discrimination within their employment places. And again, I know that the city as a whole recognizes that there is a need to be more welcoming at the higher levels, and I urge the city to work very carefully on making sure that that initiative trickles down to people on the ground floor. I think that's probably the biggest issue that we see is that the officials at the highest level recognize the problems, but the people who are regularly interacting with immigrants and internationals on a day-to-day basis are not necessarily getting the same message and not following the same protocols that they should be. So that is my input on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This will conclude this section. And I want to thank all of you for your public comments. If you wish to provide comments on... Okay, we have one other.
And if there are any others that are struggling to be brave, please feel encouraged. We so much want to hear your input.
My name is Halima Hassan. I've been in the USA in 2010. I'm very thankful to be here in the USA. Because of being in the US and the hardship, I've been getting like back home, coming through from Somalia to Kenya to the US, and the way I feel right now is way different than that. Today, the hardship I have been through in my 10 years ago in my life, and today, the hardship I'm going through is way better than that because today you can go eat and work, go to school. I have 10 kids, and all 10 kids live in Pittsburgh, and they go to school, and they go through everything that needs to be done at a school, and they pass in their grade F. I had a little bit issue came up, but United Somali Bantu of Greater Pittsburgh helped me on that process. I also thank you for the community that came up right now for our Somali. Even though my kids had an issue at downtown Pittsburgh with the lady she was talking about with the Port Authority, they could get off from the train and something happened at that, and one of them got arrested. Even though my son was approached to that, but he went back after his detention to school, and he had a lot of issues with the teachers, but he did make it and pass, finish up the school. I thank you to that, even though my kids had education, even I myself needed to have education. So when I talked to the community leader, he opened a door for me where that people can come to my house and teach me. Thank you, and that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, is there anyone else? Last call. Okay.
There's one more. Did you want to comment?
Want to comment?
No, no, no.
Okay, no. Okay. Again, thank all of you for your public comments. If you wish to provide comments to this Commission regarding this topic, and then I have an opportunity, there will be another public comment period from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. today. In addition, please write or email at the commission@humanrelations@pittsburghpa.gov, or you can send just record correspondence. Again, thank you, and the next session will start at 1 o'clock, and it will be dealing with sanctuary cities.
I just want to thank everybody who spoke today. I was both informed and moved, and thank you for how much you give to your city, whoever you are.
Okay, this session is adjourned.